I ain't got all the time to judge.
It was five days. Next one. So, I didn't want to. He wants to break it up. All that for that first.
Just sitting out there, just listening to water. You can just audience even the players.
He gone through. Robert, sir. Good to see you.
Don't say if you're on the river. Right, it's gotta be hotter. Well, no.
We've been to Haiti, a lot of them twice.
Well, have you?
Yeah.
So, it's good for you. How much you want to do this? Can they help?
It just seems like there's some options down there. It's hard.
I got a thousand and five.
Well, that's fine.
The thing is, we're right off of the east. Of course, somebody will be involved. Well, I guess he could also, right?
What they do in private management is going to separate.
I just remember he had always the same type of stuff. That's why I kind of liked to see that. Oh, I'm sure. Well, yeah.
Please do that.
Oh, God, wasn't it like, my God?
Met you down.
Well, that's not even.
I like to shop around. We were taking a walk around. We've been on a monster board. Really love it. Really must be refreshing.
Okay, monster.
You get that. This time, we had the outside mountain. This time, we're getting one side. Yeah. Yeah. Trying to help this guy.
Did you like the outside?
Oh, well, we. Yeah, you're not in your room.
No. This one.
Yeah. So, I was thinking about rationalizing. You don't vote. But, oh. I think they call that.
You know what I'm talking about. My sister, my wife, and my aunt.
I was just like, uh, where did we go?
Making a good living probably.
My mom. Everybody's making a good income. It's not their first time.
Yeah, we're. Oh, no. Oh, no. Did it go? You know, I seen that.
Yeah, I got so many things.
Oh, yeah. That's quite a good. Whatever we want.
My.
Real people have to.
Who these games can bounce?
Right, right. Glad I did what I did.
State law requires this body to announce at this time that a copy of the current Open Leagues Act is available at the back of the room for the sensible public. Sisson.
Here.
Given.
Here.
Harrington.
Here.
Uker.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome you all, but I'd like to have you all stand up for a moment of silence followed by our pledge of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one, approve the consent agenda, pay the claims as submitted, approve the minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two special council meeting, and approve the minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting. Trent Uker and Ben Johnson. Johnson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sisson.
Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Uker.
Yes.
Thank you. It is now time for a public forum. Somebody wants to approach the council? We ask you. No? Please be respectful. This is a city council meeting. And lady president.
Load up on guns and bring your friends. It's fun to be bored and to pretend. Be self-assured. Hello, hello. No Nirvana fans, huh? That was the opening prose for Nirvana. But anyway, I'm Jess Lammers and you all know that. Um, I'd like to talk to you about the airport authority today and section, I think, one dash four oh three of municipal code. I could be citing that incorrectly, but you've got some guys that sit on, um, your airport authority, specifically Dorothy Anderson, Ty Marquardt, Dan Powers, Clyde Lou King, Ted Katin. Uh, your management company for your airport is Holder J Aviation owned by Dan Powers, Todd Gerrels, and Ty Marquardt. Uh, section one, four oh three of municipal code says that if you're gonna have more than a $20,000 contract, you have to meet special report reporting requirements. Now, I just, I'm curious if the city as an oversight body, if the city is an oversight body, I see a conflict of interest that the airport authority, Ty Marquardt specifically, and Dan Powers also sit as owners of the company that manage it, manages it. So who is the independent third-party counselor that is making sure all of the bid requirements and loopholes or whatever are being covered, the i's and the, you know, dotted t's crossed? The reason I bring this up is because I don't think Dorothy Anderson would be a good supervisor due to Dorothy Anderson's experience with bid rigging. Now, the reason Dorothy Anderson has so much experience with bid rigging is because, uh, her family own WF Anderson. WF Anderson was started by an old man, then took over by the brothers who run the place into the ground for bid rigging. And I got a lot of paperwork and pay stubs and things like that from WF Anderson because my old man was a superintendent on deck. So with Dorothy's experience of bid rigging, I'd like to know who the oversight body is, and I'd like to know why Dan Powers and Ty Marquardt are allowed to circumvent any, um, rules or, you know, disclosures.
I presume, Mr. Lammers, that you've visited, uh, the airport authority with this?
Yeah, I will at their next meeting.
Oh, you haven't yet?
No, I will at their next meeting. It's my understanding that they're, they're a part of the city, so they're a.
Yeah, they're, they're elected different than, than we are.
So you have no oversight authority? None?
They're elected seats out there.
Right. But isn't the airport authority a wing of the city government? And then at that point, Dan Powers lives in Axtell, which is outside of the district he says he lives in on his application to be on the airport authority. Now, if you want, I can just change programs on my phone and cite a bunch of legal statute about how that is a lie and it's misleading. And, uh, Dan Powers is using his address at Holder's Equipment as corporate housing or whatever it may be to circumvent or sidestep the reporting rules that Ms. McDermott conformed to. So we hold a woman to a standard to live in her district, but we let a man get away with it? I mean, it seems pretty sexist and, and double-sided to me, but I'm just a constituent. And I mean, if anything, Holder just proved to me constituents don't matter.
Do you have anything else, uh, other than airport authority on?
Yeah, you put me as the last item agenda because you apparently wanted me to sit and wait, which is fine. I can sit and wait, but we can talk about the tree thing now if you want. No.
Well, let's not.
We'll wait.
Jess, can you quote that ordinance again?
Uh, one dash four oh three. Oh, hold on, Ben. I will, uh, I've got, uh, I've got a screenshot of it.
It's in that letter.
Um.
We have it, Jess.
It's, we've got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'm reluctant.
Good evening.
Hi. Uh, my name's Dayton Murdy. I'm the senior manager of government affairs at Charter Communications, locally known as Spectrum. Uh, a little bit about Charter. Uh, we are a leading cable operator providing high-speed internet, voice, video, and mobile services with the brand name Spectrum to thirty-two million customers across forty-one states. Um, and we've been investing heavily in the country, uh, over the last few years. From twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, uh, we invested over $40 billion in infrastructure and technology to improve our services for our customers. And, uh, our investments are paying off. Spectrum Internet ranks number one in rural internet service in the U.S. News and World Report twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, best rural internet service providers rankings. Here in Nebraska, we serve one hundred seventy-eight thousand customers. We have two hundred fifty-seven employees. And, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we invested over $36 million in private capital to expand our network to reach an additional eight thousand homes and small businesses. Uh, I'm here today, uh, because our franchise agreement, uh, with the city of Holdridge expired back in two thousand and six. Uh, that was an agreement that was originally, uh, agreed to in nineteen eighty-nine and then extended. Uh, and, uh, Charter would, would like to begin discussions on, uh, renewing that franchise agreement. Uh, I know that there's been some start and stop with negotiations over the last few years. I'm relatively new to my position. I'm replacing Jeremiah Blakey, who might have, uh, spoken to you about this issue before. Uh, but Charter, uh, makes it a priority to have, uh, current franchise agreements with all of our localities, uh, that we, uh, are, are servicing. And, uh, we'd like to, uh, get current with the city of Holdridge as well.
Any questions from the council? Or concerns?
And I'll, I'll save through the meeting, so if anybody wants to talk to me afterwards about what that looks like and how we can go about negotiating the franchise, I would appreciate it.
Just so the council is aware, Mr. Murdy and I have visited. I've also visited with Chris. I think right now we have an ordinance, um, that causes some conflict with, um, the potential franchise agreement. So I think that's something we need to look at addressing before we enter into a franchise agreement.
Absolutely. A part of those negotiations would, would certainly require a change in the, in the ordinance. Uh, a few of those, uh, include rate, rate regulations. So, um, with the ordinance that was written in two thousand and five, um, and is, uh, you know, I wa, I wasn't with Charter at the time, but probably one of the reasons why our franchise wasn't renewed. Uh, there's, there's rate regulations. There's, um, provisions that would, would dictate, um, what, what goes on our channels. Uh, it would require, if the franchise were to expire, us to pull out all of our infrastructure out of the ground. Um, there's, there's a number of provisions in the ordinance that are concerning and have been holding up, um, those, uh, negotiations, um, and, and why we haven't, uh, submitted a, a franchise agreement, uh, through the ordinance. And would require, uh, negotiation, um, and, and changes to that ordinance. Sorry. My name's Dayton Murdy.
Dayton Murdy, okay. Thank you, Dayton.
Thank you.
It looks like I only have like two minutes. I'll be quick.
Start.
Take all the time we need.
Okay, so I made copies for you guys, um, about vacant registry, which is something that you, I really think we need to look at for all the abandoned buildings and homes and everything. These are from, ones from the east coast, ones from the west coast, but it all applies to even little towns. Um, so if you're interested, those are for you guys. Sorry about my copier. It wasn't great. And I want to thank you for the cleanup efforts that you've already done. We saw right away things happening, and that's amazing. Um, my group is waiting till after the special meeting to, to sort of plan, and we would be helping. Um, I really would like to talk about, um, there's two things. One is the Sunquist houses that have been vacant for decades, and they're on North Lincoln, and one of them has a dumpster in front of them. But way back when I was on the Housing Authority, they were rats, mice, everybody that knows it. And evidently, it's, um, I don't know, it's a will thing or something, but I feel like the city should be able to demand that they either clean it up or take down the houses or something because it's not healthy. And that's one thing these talk about is the health of the community. And the other thing is, I would love it if you guys could figure out how to clean up the underpass. Our, when people come in from the east and go to the Ag Center or, you know, or to our fair, it's like the most ugly spot, spot of our community. Um, I would, I would be glad to go out and take care of the railroad side. I mean, it'd probably take an hour to clean up, rake up, haul off, but there's a huge dumping ground of concrete and stuff, and it's just piled up there. And then it's falling down into that little occasional water space, which could actually be kind of cool. And so I'm just asking that maybe there could be something done to hold that stuff back, or it just looks terrible. So if you come in from the west and go into the underpass and you're heading for the fairgrounds, there's nothing attractive about that. And so if you want, I will do my best to get people and help do it, but I don't think we can handle all of it. Anyway, we are looking to you guys for the leadership and clean up our town, but we want to be helpful. We don't expect it to be all on you. We want to be helpful, and I think there's professional help too available. Um, but anyway, that's my plea.
The clay pits down there, just south of the underpass, uh, that would be, uh, county property. But, uh.
What about all of that concrete dumping above it?
County property.
That's county. Thank you. I will call Teresa.
And the floor. The floor.
It'd be nice if we had that all filled out, but we use that for a holding pond on heavy rain.
I love, I think the water should stay there. I mean, that's interesting, very interesting, but it just needs to be cleaned up. So even the weeds are the county? What, everything from the railroad south?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, that is not correct.
Oh.
We own the property. The county owns a property right behind that, what she's talking about. That is our pit.
Oh, it is?
That is the city's pit.
Okay.
And we own the property. We own the property from the railroad down to, uh, Kowat fence where the yard is. But then the county has property right behind us to the, to the west.
So it's the county that's dumping above?
No, I'm, nobody's dumping in there anymore.
Oh, well, it just looks like piles.
Yeah, it's, it's been there. It was put there for erosion years ago. And from my understanding, I don't remember what it was down there, but it was, uh, I don't want to say a landfill, but they were dumping concrete and brick there before I moved to town. He's correct. He's correct. I know the history. He is correct. It was concrete dumped there. It was for erosion and soil control. The reason that pond is there is because that, that before drought, that used to flood four times a year, and that's why nobody ever did anything to improve that little area is because it literally floods nine foot deep four times a year if we're not in a drought, ma'am.
Well, but we could do something. We could do something because people come in.
You could make it a duck marsh if I can duck hunt it.
What's, uh, do we know what the rules are for the railroad? What, I mean, they own property here and I don't know.
Well, roughly, there's roughly from the center of the main track, it's roughly a hundred-foot right-of-way north and, north and south.
Okay.
And, you know, we're not allowed to touch that.
Exactly.
Um, we have tried to do it. We can try to control it over there by fringes, and we try and maintain that, weed and whatnot, but we're not supposed to go on railroad right-of-way.
So can just a run-of-the-mill person do it?
No.
Just considered trespassing. You might check with the railroad.
I'm gonna check with the railroad. That's crazy.
Let me mention something.
Let me mention something. Um, I did stop last when I spoke with, uh, Kim, uh, talking about the holes in the railroad, and you mentioned, told me, and took those belong to the railroad and that they were hard to get, to get done. I happened to stop when some people were there. The guy was there, and those holes were filled on the one that goes to the Ag Center.
I saw that.
They filled them, which I stopped and I thanked them. Uh, the main guy is not always there, but I'm telling you, you gotta catch him because I spoke to him about when I was there to thank him. I said, "Boy, you guys got a lot of weeds." He said, "Well, the railroad is supposed to clean up." I think we just need to keep asking them. But we need to stop when the right guys are there, and it's hard to catch them because, you know, they must be on the train.
I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
I am correct. The east end's a hundred feet north, a hundred foot down.
Um, anyway, thanks, guys. I just wanted to express my appreciation and appreciate your help.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to bring something before the city council? If not, I will close the public forum. Item three, approved request for sidewalk use and closing of West Avenue from Fourth to Sixth Avenue on Sunday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the annual Halloween spectacular concrete event.
I'm Sarah Stevens Stale. I coordinate the event for Spirit of Grace. Um, Candice Miller from the Methodist Church was not able to join us. They have joined in last year and this year to help coordinate the event. Um, in the past, we had asked for just one block. Now that we have two churches involved, we have, are asking for two blocks. The event runs from four to six, and we would ask for closure from three o'clock for setup. And we will have volunteers who provide trunks for trunk or treat. We run a hay rack ride. The Sun Theater is, um, joining us in doing some fun events like photos and maybe a slightly scary, minimally scary, I'm hoping haunted house for the kids. Um, and this year, we are adding another aspect that, um, the safe center will be present with a trunk, and we are asking people to bring non-perishable items to replenish their pantry for their clients as October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So we are asking people to come and have fun, but also give back. Do you have any questions for me?
How many did you have last year?
Um, we estimate about six hundred kids and associated adults.
Cool.
Yeah, it has been, and it, it increased for quite a while, but that's been the, the most consistent guess we have. We ask people to bring six hundred pieces of candy, and there are some, a couple people who pay extra attention, so we have an estimate.
Do we want to keep, uh, Fifth Avenue open, or we want to block that because traffic?
That would, that intersection, yes. Just that, the, the intersection, we would ask that that be closed as well. Yes.
Okay, from Fourth to Sixth?
Yes.
Kim, is there any problem extending that up?
Nobody do.
It's gonna be on a Sunday.
There was a lot of kids there last year. You remember that?
It's a good deal.
And it's a lot of fun. Come look for me. I may be in a witch costume this year. With the green face. It's the green face! And the hat!
What was the time again?
Four o'clock to six o'clock.
And you, but you want it started at three?
Yeah, if we can get started at three, that gives people the chance to set up, and we end up with a lot of traffic up and down those two blocks. It just makes it a little easier if it happens earlier.
I think it's a great thing.
Motion, Larry Gibbons.
Everybody wants Karen.
That's right.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Buicker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sisson?
Yes.
All right, so, thanks for doing that, heading it up.
Thank you so much. Come join us. We have a lot of fun. We even give the adults cookies.
Item four, approve the route and request for assistance for the Casa Superhero Five-K One-Mile Watt Run Event on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two.
So this year, we partnered with the Y, um, hence the change in the route. Um, the one mile would just be down Brown Street, down to Ninth Avenue and back. And then the Five-K would leave the Y, go over to East Avenue, down to Twelfth, back up to Fourteenth, and then back to the Y. Um, we figured we were gonna go west. Um, and I don't know what the name of the street is, the blacktop that's north of School or Green. Um, however, that's county, and with at the end of the middle of harvest, I don't think that's a good idea for safety reasons. Um... I don't think that we need to shut down the highway, but if we just had city personnel there, and we're gonna have volunteers there also, um...
You want the city personnel there, or would the police force be?
Usually, we, we'll let it last.
Yes, you guys have a lot of...
We've done it before, Trent.
Yeah.
Would they be willing to stop and wait if it was heavy traffic?
Yeah. And that would just be something that we would discuss beforehand.
Just work through that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's my concern about that.
And I know we're still only a couple weeks, but, I mean, right now, we only have two signed up for the Five-K. So the rest are all signed up for the one mile.
Just work with Kim if they have any questions, and, um, they'll work with you. Motion to approve.
I see.
Dale Harrington, make the motion. Nick Smith, seconds.
Buicker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sisson?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Motion, Kelly. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
You'll hurt his content, Kelly.
Item five, approve a request to block off the alley on the east side of the Lost Way Brewery for a Fall Festival Pumpkin Bowling Event. Anybody here from Lost Way?
I'm online. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Um, so we would be using the same part of the alley that we usually request. Um, again, I talked to the Eagles, made sure that they don't have anything going on, um, in the alley, and they're fine with us. Um, using that side of it too. Um, essentially, we'll have probably three to four lanes, um, hay bales kind of set outside for the pumpkin bowling lanes. Um, we pull an FDL, which we already have submitted through the state, um, for alcohol to be taken outside in the alley. But, you know, I think the only thing we would probably ask would be for help getting a fence off.
Do you have plans?
She's requesting help to fence it off. We had this discussion.
That should not be a, an issue?
No, we've done it before.
What date is this for? Jessica?
This is October eighth. The events we have planned from five to eight were open from ten, so, um, I don't know, Kim, I can get with you and figure out what time we can get the alleys blocked off. Um, but anytime before five and after eight would be great for us.
Uh, you, four thirty, four o'clock, four thirty?
Kim, Kim, hang on. Didn't we change our policy on these?
No, we have not done that yet. Hey, Chris, we haven't...
When is that going to force?
We haven't approved anything as of yet. I know Kim talked about it a little bit when we'd ever moved forward off.
Okay, good.
So Jess, what time would you like this to be? At four o'clock?
Four o'clock would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to approve their request.
I see.
Larry Gibbons, Mike Sisson.
Harrington?
Yes.
Buicker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sisson?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Motion, Kelly. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Hey, guys.
Thank you.
Item six, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, authorize the execution of right-of-way agreement for business district sidewalk use.
Chris and I have talked about this for a few months, and I did meet with my committee about it about a month ago. And I would just wanted to make sure that we had Chris here so he could give his opinion on it too. He was gone last council meeting. But what this would be, would be to, kind of what similar as Carney is allowed, um, the people that are downtown could put, uh, a chair or a table with a fence, a small three, four-foot fence around it to allow to have alcohol outside, uh, on the right-of-way. Um, just like you would, like say, you'd see that Carney's done that at a couple different places. Um, they would have to sign the agreement that is included in your paperwork. And then, uh, there's also just some rules that, uh, I followed and changed a little bit according to the city of Holdridge and what our guidelines are, um, what we would like to see. And then the agreement, would they'd have to sign the agreement, um, and have to be approved by Mr. Rector or his duly-appointed, um, official. And, uh, um, it's just something to give a little more, I guess, if they have nice weather, to sit outside a little bit. It would be JB's or the, the brewery or, or, uh...
The Trenas.
The Trenas, yeah. If they just, they have to still, it's written in there that there is no smoking out in this area, that there is, uh, they still gotta have room for open, for wheelchair, you know, or handicap accessible to get through there. Um, so they wouldn't be taking up the whole sidewalk. It'd just be a, a certain area. And then it would be required to have a map, um, with it when they submit it, with their, with the signed agreement.
And this would be yearly?
Yes.
Question for you, Kim. So, so the agreement is, uh, by the owner, twenty dollars, owner has, uh, its own, uh, mainly, their costs and expenses shall maintain site and seating area. How about the fencing?
Yes, that's, that's all included.
A portion of it?
Yeah, that's, that's all included. Any, and if they wanna, for some reason, put something up and put lights out there, it's, that, that is all their responsibility. And if, for some reason, they want to put an awning up, that's why there's, it's written in there for different permitting, because awnings require permits.
Right.
And it cannot, that, that, awnings cannot extend over the, the, the street, et cetera. So, um, that's where the wording for the separate permitting would be.
It's gonna be a little bit more difficult for the property owners to clear the sidewalks when the snow comes, but that's their responsibility.
Correct. And, and they might choose to, you know, take it up and, and put it away for the winter too.
So this is something that needs to be mobile, or they can put it up permanent?
No, it, it would have to be mobile. It, it's, it's just stated in there that it's gotta be removable.
They could, they could permanently fix it and then remove it. I mean...
Yes.
Yeah.
They could, like, um, like when we talked, we were talking about Dairy Queen.
Right.
You know, where they got that, but smaller version, a nice fence.
Sure.
It's anchored in, it's safe, it's secure. But if they just aim in a year, they're like, "Yeah, we're done." It was flop, undo some concrete anchors, cut it up.
Bolt it and go.
Bolted.
And they're responsible to repair the sidewalk for the...
They're responsible for the sack, they're responsible for the snow removal, they're responsible for all these.
If they cause any damage to...
But if they wanted to make it, uh, temporary, they could do that too, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Cause I mean, I think they'd want to take it out in the wintertime, you know, for the snow and stuff, I would think.
It's not only, it's nice in the winter, they might want to leave it and just take
Well, yeah, but I mean...
They gotta go out and shovel it. They gotta go out and shovel it.
But if it did snow, they could pull it up. That's what I'm thinking.
And it is in there. Still need to maintain those sidewalks with the snow removal.
Correct. And adequate movement for traffic in front, with the, like you said, with the wheelchair.
Cause they all know how the cars overhang the curb.
Well, correct, yeah.
You see other communities doing this, and nice weather, and people kind of like to sit out and watch the traffic go by and enjoy the breeze.
Can I ask a question, or no?
So, anybody want to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen?
Is there anything in here that if, uh, if, like, we can revoke their permission if any place becomes a...
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that's, was written into the agreement also.
Yeah, if there's any issue, we can go back and say, "We're taking your permit. You need to remove your articles now."
Okay.
Or whatever it may be.
Yeah. I think we discussed that too when we...
Correct.
Without some way to help maybe attract some new, new blood if it's there.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
And Johnson, make the motion?
Second.
Nick Smith, second.
Smith?
Yes.
Sisson?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Buicker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Item seven, approve purchase of property by Phelps County Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Telleri.
Members of administrative staff. Uh, I'm here to request authority to purchase property for the purposes of, uh, developing more housing in the community. Uh, as you know, housing is a, a major issue for our community as well as other communities around the state. Um, workforce development and housing development go hand in hand. Houses where jobs sleep at night, and, uh, we want to do everything we can to encourage people who live in Holdridge and Phelps County who are employed here. Um, our latest, uh, housing study indicates that more than twenty-one hundred people commute into Phelps County every day for work. Um, and that is an area where we want to continue to focus our efforts to convert those commuters into full-time residents because, uh, if they live here, they spend their paychecks here. If they don't, um, they go someplace else. And not only that, people who, uh, live elsewhere are more likely to seek jobs elsewhere closer to where they live, especially when commuting costs are rising as they are today. So, um, we have identified a property that we believe is ideally suited for future development of housing. Um, we don't have a development plan established yet, but we're working with two, uh, companies that are interested in developing more housing on this site. And once we have the property secured, we'll get serious about, uh, designing a plan and determining what specifically, what kind of, um, housing we're going to put there. But it's likely it's going to involve a mix of, uh, single-family owner-occupied homes and apartments of some sort. So, um, uh, according to the, uh, the terms of the Economic Development Agreement that was passed by the voters in two thousand fifteen, we're coming to you to ask your authority for, uh, PCD, PCDC to purchase that property.
Holdridge has been landlocked for some time. It's hard to go north. There's nothing available anymore. Uh, south, uh, we got, uh, Lake Sodom. Uh, east, we have the Lower Stink Creek, Upper Stink Creek, I guess. Sacramento. Uh, west, that land's not available for now. But I'm excited to see something developed there.
Yeah.
Uh, that's set vacant. It's prime area between the new ball fields and the, the shopco and...
The advantage to us, mayor, is that, uh, there's infrastructure in place nearby that, uh, the subdivision can connect to. Uh, so development of this property is going to, uh, be more, uh, cost-effective than virtually any other property in the community. And, uh, uh, we need housing urgently.
And we'll get Hill Street paved.
Yes.
We'll, we'll sell the dust.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So it's already, I, I believe that's already platted for cul-de-sacs?
It's platted, uh, for, uh, smaller, single-family lots now. It's zoned R2.
Right.
And, uh, it's more than likely, uh, going to be replatted once we determine what kind of housing, uh, the developers want to put in there.
Okay. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, i- isn't the, isn't the sewer already buried? I think it's the sewer for a portion of that, not all of it?
Um, no, the only, the only sewer that is done up there is on, to accommodate the housing off of Eighteenth.
Right.
It would require to have sewer put down... It would require to have sewer put down in the presumed, presumed cul-de-sac of West Seventeenth and West Sixteenth. And you'd also have to put water in to get it fitted.
Uh, where is the water and sewer now?
Uh, the water and sewer both run up and down Hill Street.
Okay.
And you'd have to come in and bring it in from the cul-de-sac and go um, east with it to attach it to that.
Yeah.
Line that goes north, south. And then there's a water line um, that runs on the, I believe on the west side of Hill Street. And then you'd have to take it down and then um, once you have the plant done and you put the infrastructure in, you could go ahead and put the, the water lines as, as the contractor, put all the water lines into the properties also, as the sewer taps to.
Yeah.
Ron, can you briefly explain, so, when we do stuff like this uh, for the taxpayers, like, you go into negotiations with the contractors and then um, you sell the land to them, correct?
Either sell or incentivize the land somehow to encourage them to develop what we think the market needs.
So, by incentivize, incentivized, do you mean we like sell to them at a discounted price, so that to encourage them to build up?
Yes. And, and that's the advantage of having PCDC control the property. We can work with the developers to find out what are the, the things that will uh, either remove or, or reduce the risk that they have in developing new. Thank you.
Looked like a win-win situation for the community to get some uh, land available and some housing.
Can you add potential, uh, you say you have two developers?
Correct.
Now ask uh, where they're from?
One is from Lincoln, one is from Carney. Um, I might give you a, a real brief update on what's going on in Crew Subdivision right now. We have four single-family detached homes that are under construction right now. There are modulators that are being constructed by a company in Wayne, Nebraska. Those will be set on basement foundations in March next year. We're working with another developer to build um, a series of twelve duplex-style townhomes that will occupy uh, the other twelve lots uh, that are along Tenth Avenue. Those will also come online March, April next year. The first four will come online March, April next year. And then he will build in groups of four until he has all twelve lots occupied. We have three more lots that face onto East Street. And I, I've gotta compliment the city. Uh, East Street did a lot to improve that whole neighborhood. Uh, it looks better. And, and so uh, uh, we were a little surprised that we, we got interest as soon as we have from a developer who is interested in putting duplexes on those three lots as well that will face onto. We don't have an agreement signed yet, but we're working on it. So, Crew Subdivision by this time next year may be close to being full.
Good. Any more questions? If not, motion to approve uh, the purchase of property by, by Phelps County Economic Development Corporation.
Oh, my gosh, one second.
Then Johnson, Mike Sisson.
Smith?
Yes.
Sisson?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Uter?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
We'll keep you posted.
Okay. Item eight. Discussion of letter and ideas for our community's resident cooperation and trimming trees over sidewalks to meet city code requirements. The reason this is added to uh, the bottom, this was added yesterday uh, to the agenda. Mr. Lammers, uh, you had some comments that you wanted to start with.
Yeah, my name's Jess Lammers and I uh, I responded to the city and asked to be placed on the agenda uh, for tonight's council meeting to discuss Kim Parsons' letter that I must, you sent it to everybody, right, Kim? Everybody in the city got one? Right. So, and I don't have the statute memorized, but some city code says there's gotta be eight-foot clearance from the sidewalk to the, the trees or whatever, vertical clearance. Am I understanding that correctly? It's vertical clearance? Okay. I don't have a problem with that. It makes sense to me. Sure, good deal. What doesn't make sense to me is timing, community involvement, and a guy from PCDC was just up here. There's another foundation in town called The Foundation. Um, and I have a very uh, thorough understanding of how you set up a trust, a holding company, an LLC, and a foundation to move your money around. Now that being said, we got all this stuff in Holdridge. Kim sends this letter that everybody's got to conform to this code. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, um, a guy come to the city council and wanted to have the dump opened on a Sunday so that the churches could go around and clean up yards for elderly, uh, disabled people, disabled veterans. Now, no qualms with the code, no qualms with the letter, of a lot of qualms with the lack of communication and foresight because hindsight's always twenty-twenty. And every time I come to these meetings, it seems to be a lot of would've, should've, could've. So, what my proposal becomes is, why didn't the city communicate with the churches who were already planning to have the dope, dump open on a Sunday and go around and collect yard waste, tree limbs, whatever the case may be? Why wouldn't you all work together because teamwork make the dream work? And then why wouldn't you go a step further and call a guy like Dustin Stewart? Call old man Ray Stewart if you want to, um, and be like, hey, the churches are doing this cleanup day. There's gonna be some trees that may possibly need trimmed, your bucket truck, a guy skilled with a chainsaw, whatever. And you could get a receipt from the city or the foundation or whatever, and then Stewart's Tree Service could write that off on their taxes as a charitable contribution. So now you've included a local business, you've included the local churches, you've can let property owners conform to the statute that I don't have memorized from Kim's letter about the eight-foot vertical clearance from the sidewalks. You've done all that while accommodating disabled veterans, elderly people in the community, and other folks that might have a disability. Now, the reason I find all this pertinent is that the people I've mentioned, which would be a quasi-suspect class legally, the disabled, the elderly, the veterans, the disabled veterans specifically, um, they are all probably on fixed incomes, those group of people. So not only can they not do the work, they can't afford to call somebody and hire the work out. And now, by default, someone who's in a quasi-suspect class, disabled veteran, um, elderly may incur an extra bill from the city, cause y'all are just gonna show up and say, you didn't conform to the letter. We're gonna cut the trees, we're gonna send you the bill, and that's the end of it. And then some guy's gonna come up here and be upset about it, much like, and I'm gonna use a horrible description, cause I don't remember the man's name, but he works at B D, he's um, of ethnic descent, different than myself, might even be a Muslim. But he moved to America, took a job at B D, never owned a house before, and the city was oh-so-kind as to mow his grass and charge him five hundred dollars. He came up here and y'all made it right with him and, and didn't enact the fine and just charged the two hundred or whatever dollars labor it cost for someone to go mow his lawn. But with a little bit of forethought and planning, community involvement, it could be better for everybody. So, I don't understand, this is my question, and if y'all choose that not to answer, that's, I suppose you're right. Um, I don't understand why the city didn't coordinate with the churches and then also coordinate with a private business who, who might be interested in the tax write-off depending on how their books rolled for the year. Maybe they need the tax write-off, maybe they don't. Maybe they're just willing to donate the, the time, materials, and labor to be a good neighbor.
Am I hearing this right, that you may be volunteering to head up something like this, Mr. Lammers, that you try to coordinate?
I have a disability, I don't coordinate anything. No, 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 no. You, you.
Oh, okay, I, I misunderstood you.
Well, I, I would've asked to have joined the city council, but you appointed your choice. So, you can have somebody from the council, somebody that gets paid, somebody in the community that's respected. You can have them coordinated. I'm just pointing out the deficit.
These, all these, I should say, all those letters were sent out are on uh, residential, the private properties.
Yep.
Yeah. Other than, our city's trimming up through the parks, our city's trimming up.
I'm not asking the city to trim anything. I'm saying when the, when the churches went around to private property and helped, you know, disabled people, veterans, elderly people clean up things, why didn't the city send that letter in conjunction with all that timing? It just seems like.
They'll do that next year.
Just seems like poor communication to me.
Several years ago, we did that, Mr. Lammers. We had somebody in the church.
Why didn't you keep doing it?
Just listen, please. We had somebody take on the North Park. He hired uh, Stewart to go through. Uh, he looked at thi- this um, citizen leader. He hired Stewart to go through the park and trim everything. And then uh, the church come through and hauled up loads and loads and loads, costing five hundred dollars. Uh, we did reimburse him, so he didn't have to pay that out of his pocket between the church and us.
So how come you didn't keep doing it that? How come you didn't keep doing it? The community involvement, contacting a tree cutter when you send the letter, why didn't you?
That's what we're trying to do, Mr. Lammers. Thank you for your interest.
Yeah, your tryin' ain't good enough.
Uh, we're, we're always looking for good volunteers. Thank you.
You don't want my services. I'd do it right the first time.
It is now uh, time for open discussion. Mr. Richter?
I have nothing tonight.
You will next time. Dave?
I don't either.
Chief McIntyre?
I don't have anything either.
Okay. Dale?
Uh, yeah, not really. Uh, it, there has been a lot of improvement in the community and it's great. Uh, things are looking better and it's good to, to see some improvement on Hotel Dale also. The windows going in and it looks real nice.
I never heard update on what the church did uh, on Thursday, Sunday. I know they had quite a few loads. I, I went by several properties and sure, cleaned up the neighborhood.
Yeah, there were, there were quite a few, uh, quite a few places that had a lot of trees. There were some that had a lot of trees. I, I don't think the, the projects maybe were quite as involved this time, but we were gone on, seeing our grandkids. But uh, what I understand was very successful and they had a good turnout. A lot of work done out the cemetery also.
Oh, forgot about that.
Volunteer work there, and that's always appreciated, so.
Cool.
Yep.
Thanks Dale. Mr. Uter?
No, sir, nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Not tonight.
Did I hear that right? Nick?
Uh, no, I was just gonna ask, kind of with him, Kim, if they got the letter and it'll take them longer than ten days. If they would call you, it'd be like, hey, um.
If they, if they call, I've had through, I had numerous calls when I got back in the office. And if they're willing to work, I have no problem.
I asked that is, we had somebody down our street that, in a wheelchair, and he asked us if we could help with them. We're both busy, like, well, we'd be active in ten days.
It's, it's, I, I have somebody that called me yesterday that's thirty days out. I said, that's fine, I'll just mark it on my list and I, thank you for the phone call, thank you for letting me know.
Well, I will give you a call tomorrow and let other people know. I can't get to it, you know, something going on, but you know.
All right, thank you.
We're looking for voluntary compliance and a lot of time after neighbors and stuff, or, you know, you'll have family or something. We'd like to see volunteer compliance on a private property. Mike?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Given?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Brian?
I don't have anything.
And Kim?
Nothing, sir.
Natalie?
Nothing for me.
I would like to, I, I had a letter the other day saying we shouldn't sell the, the house at six-ten East Avenue. And we've had a lot of interest in it.
Yeah, I've shown it twelve times in the last week. So we get calls, yeah, it's been fairly, I was out at the law, the office a lot last week showing that house. I've been in it more than I care to. I know the inside and outside of the house, so.
So we're just looking for.
And we sent out packets, I mean, packets, I mean, I handed out packets, everybody flicked out, plus we sent some out, but people have it, look at the houses, want to bid on it, so.
This one lady says, don't tell us, we're gonna build a new library, three stories. That's up to the library, and they're not talking that they wanna do that, so, whatever. Where are we standing on getting uh, the roll-offs off the street during the wintertime?
I have contacted the one up on uh, East Avenue, and he told me it would be off um, before wintertime. I will contact him again. Chris asked me about it too, and, and he was supposed to come in and talk to me and he just hasn't yet, so I will call him again. He's a pretty tough man to get ahold of.
Yeah, it's.
But he assured me it would be off by wintertime, so.
It's been over a year and I guess.
It's been longer than that.
Yeah.
What's the first day of winter?
First day of winter, I think it's December twenty-first, first.
He promises to have that by then?
But he's, he said he would, but I'll, I'll call him.
I'm sure the snow's gonna fly before that.
Yeah, one way or another it'll be gone before that.
That, that roll-off is on uh, snow emergency route. Again, I'm still.
All the more reason to get it off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Been there a long time.
No other discussion? This meeting is adjourned.